We must have somehow used, somehow we used the opportunity. Is he happy?
Yeah.
Janice, are we rolling?
We are live.
We are live, okay. We're all still very loud. I can hear me, I can see myself. Good. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the Camden Select Board meeting for August 9, 2022. Guys? That's okay. We are, as usual, we are streaming on YouTube this evening as well as hybrid on Zoom. The link can be found on our agenda. Agenda can be found on the Camden website on the Select Board and Select Board packets. Please feel free to join as an attendee.
We're muted on Zoom. We were muted on Zoom because...
Okay, well, not anymore, right? Okay, good, thank you. Again, to Zoom attendees, if you have any input, please raise your hand. As people do here in the audience, and you're afforded the same rights and access as they are by raising your hand as preferred. Do not use the chat function, we will not respond to chats. Q and A, we will try to respond, but we can't guarantee that we can. Again, the preferred mode is by raising your hand. So with that, I will go into our agenda and start with public comments on non-agenda items. Do we have anybody? Young lady, please.
Bernice Berger. Um, microphone.
Push the button on the speaker to ring.
Okay.
Thank you, Bernice.
Yep. Bernice Berger, Camden. I'm addressing Audra, and I think the Select Board, and what I have to say. But I'll look at you, Audra. Okay. I would like to know what your present intentions are for the immediate repair to the Montgomery Dam. I'm not asking for your intent for a year. From now, I would like to hear what your intent is, let's say, within the next month.
First of all, this is the public comment on non-agenda items. It's not an agenda nor a question and answer period for non-agenda items. If it were, it would be on the agenda. So, Audra, if you'd like to address that, but I suggest you not get into a Q and A on this issue.
No, I agree, this is...
It's not appropriate.
Okay, well, I'd like to continue with...
Please.
What I have to say. There was money set aside for the dam repairs. And my understanding, it's been used elsewhere, perhaps, and there may be some money left over. But it hasn't been, it hasn't been used for the Montgomery Dam. And the dam and the falls are unsightly. And they're an embarrassment to local citizens, to business people, and to the town because of the debris, the bushes, the trees that are growing in between all the cracks. I mean, it's kind of a natural. I've never seen it look so bad. And I have had a business that overlooked the dam and the falls. And it's just being overgrown with...
Stuff.
Stuff. And it's very unattractive to me. So I feel like there's a lack of maintenance and a lack of planning. And I just would like to know what the intent is, and you're saying you can't answer that?
No, you got, people need to understand, and this is Mr. Noah, but this, this item of public comment of non-agenda items, for somebody to come and make a comment to the town, perhaps a request for information is fine, you're not going to get it here. The reason is, is because by the town meeting form of government, when we put something on agenda, we put something in the packet to support it. So individuals who would like to counter any position can have the opportunity to see whether they want to come or not. So it's not, this is not a time, we can direct you to send an email to that effect, to the town manager, and ask for a response, that's very legitimate, of course. Or to the Select Board, if you'd like, that's also very legitimate. But this, this, this is not an agenda item, so we're not going to get into a debate about what's being maintained, where budget's being spent, where it's not being spent in a Select Board meeting, which is principally for the business of the Select Board.
It's really frustrating because just trying to get something on your agenda is not clear how to do that, and what you want to put on your agenda. My understanding is you make up the agenda.
Audra and I sit down and look over the list of agenda request items every couple of weeks, and take a look at what we're going to bring on and what we're not going to bring on. Yes, that's exactly the function of what we do, to submit an agenda request and something you would like on agenda to myself and Audra. It's been that way for a long time. Anyway, we're not, we're not...
Okay.
You make, if you have legitimate questions on dam budget and maintenance, kind of things, submit them to the town manager. That's the purpose of, of what we have, that, this is not a town manager meeting, this is a Select Board meeting.
But this is the time when someone can come and bring something up.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely. And you are, and we're hearing you.
Yeah.
So, anyhow.
But you, you can't give me an answer.
We're not going to.
You're not going to give me an answer.
Not here, no, we're not.
I, it just makes me...
You've, you've been here at a number of meetings when people have come up and asked for various answers about something being on agenda next week, and I've given the same answer every time, we're not going to answer in this meeting. But however, you want to request something, absolutely, we want to hear it.
Well, I mean, okay, I can put an end to it, so it's not like a big mystery. There is nothing planned in the next month.
That's really upsetting to me.
You, you got your answers. Anything else you want to mention?
Well, I, I feel like it's disrespectful to the town to let the falls and the dam...
Thank you, Grace, thank you.
...be in this kind of dissipate, disrepair.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments on non-agenda items?
Could, to answer that question more fully, there is a component of this that I think is often a source of confusion, which is the, that the dam and the sluiceway make up the boundary between Harbor Park and town property. And so I agree, there's, there's sometimes confusion and maybe a lack of coordination between the Library Board of Trustees, which controls everything to, to one side of the dam. So all of the vegetation, I get complaints all the time about vegetation there and in other places. Some of it is the, is the dam, but really any vegetation that is on the Harbor Park side of the dam is not within the jurisdiction of the Select Board. It's, it's a Harbor Park Library Board of Trustees issue. So I think sometimes with the complaints about the way things look over there, it's like we have to kind of try to separate out which things that the town could act on, like, you know, the, the trees that are growing up in the middle island, for instance, like figuring out the shoreline zoning stuff, maybe there are some, there's like some thinning that could happen that would make everybody happier that would be possible. I think that's like a town thing that could be talked about, whereas the stuff over in Harbor Park would be a Library Board of Trustees thing, so that's just...
Thank you.
The trees and the island.
Right. Yeah, she's pointing out that part of this, well, scope belongs to the library, you might want to have a discussion with them in parallel. Thank you, thank you, Allison. Mr. Anderson, please.
Ray Anderson, Cove Road, Camden. This is another non-agenda item, okay? And I'm disappointed that there's nothing on the agenda for tonight about the McGonagall Cook River Task Force. I've had a lot of people ask me about the Citizens Task Force, who's going to be on it, what's its purpose, what will it be doing, when will it be meeting, how do you apply to get on it, et cetera, et cetera. There's even a lot of speculation going around, I've heard, that this task force is only going to meet once or twice. That it will be loaded with people either for or against Montgomery Dam, and that it won't include enough landowners and business owners along the, who border the river and have a huge stake in what, any changes that are made up and down the river. So I guess what I'm saying is that I encourage the Select Board to be as transparent, inclusive, and open-minded as possible regarding this Citizens Task Force, looking into the future of the McGonagall Cook River, and listen to all sides on the issue. You need to know and accept what the citizens of Camden want for their town and the river that runs through it.
Right. Thank you, Ray, all good points. I think one of the things we mentioned in the past, and it has been a slow start, and some of the rumors, I don't know where they come from, but if you have any questions, Sophie is our liaison.
Yep.
And you can direct them to her, and she can answer any questions. It's been a little bit of a slow start.
If you can address that when you get into your Select Board...
Yeah, we could, we could. But it, you also don't want to bring things to the agenda until, by the way, we contemplated that this week, Ray, that was a good question, but it wasn't quite ready, because we were still, we, we had a little slow start with the contract signing and things like that, so, you know, you know how I feel about how long it's taken to put this task force together, so please. But thank you for coming, Ray. Anybody else who wants to speak? Good, but that, we'll move on to, what? No, there was nobody. Okay.
Yes, my name's Tom Zummel, recently moved to Camden, two years ago. And basically, with the whole business of the dam and the river restoration, I am of two minds. I want to do the river restoration, but I also want to keep the dam. So I, I don't know how you would do it, I would just, I'm just urge you to somehow do more study of, are there ways to do both? So far, I've spent an enormous amount of time reading the two interflow reports. And so far, it has just come down to me recently, I realized that there's really only one option there by which you could do both, the way I read those reports. But maybe I'm missing something, so I wish that somebody would look into that specifically, because I think there's a lot of hard feelings, obviously, about removing the dam, but if there's a way you could do both, that should be explored. So that's, that's...
Well, good, good point, we're, we're, we're in a project, we haven't finished it, we're trying to get more detail, more data to feed the public, including using the task force, so that's all on the table. Thank you.
Also, I think a lot of it will rest on, we did include a lot of that language in the most recent grant application, which specifically said that people need to see a wider array of options, and that we need more money to explore more options based on the, the feedback. So I'm personally really hoping that...
Okay, but those options would be on the table. They don't have to be the only options, but...
Right, I mean, I think it's clear that everybody wants a, a wider array of, of options and to feel like different things have been pursued, so...
Yes.
We did say we were going to need more money to go back and redo something, so I'm, I'm really hopeful that they're going to be willing to fund that.
Thank you. But that was the last ant I saw, so we're going to move on to item two, which is, excuse me, I've been talking too much today, obviously. The approval of the board minutes from July 19, 2022. Are there any comments, board members, corrections, otherwise, can I have a motion to accept?
I make a motion that we... I make a motion that we accept the minutes of the, of July...
19.
19, 2022, board meeting.
Second.
Second, Allison. Any discussion? None, then all those in favor? Five zero, thank you. Public hearings tonight, we have three licenses. Just, I'm curious, before I go to the public hearings, anybody here that represents any one of these three, the Schooner, Apple Door, Camden Harbor Inn, for both licenses, and not seeing anybody, I will just, the reason I ask is because in the public hearing process, the purpose of the public hearing is for us to get input from the public on the matters at hand, and we would ask those individuals to come up and talk to the, to the issue pro, or against, or just want to speak to it. But since there's nobody here from the public, I will close the public hearing portion and revert to the Select Board for a decision on the first item, which is the Camden Harbor Inn at 83 Bayview Street for the renewal of a Class One hotel liquor license. Comments or a motion, board?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Tom, thank you. Any, any discussion? All those in favor? Five zero. Similarly, on the second item, for the Camden Harbor Inn at 83 Bayview Street for a special amusement permit. Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. And any discussion? All those in favor? Five zero. And lastly, for the Schooner, Apple Door, at 18 Bayview Street for renewal of public service Class One vessel liquor license. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, did discussion?
Can, can I, is this, I've just, I know we've probably gone over this before, but a vessel liquor license is a special category?
It's a good question. I suspect it's a, it's a subcategory. It's a moving bar.
Does that...
I don't know. Can't throw the bottles overboard, I, I don't know any details of it.
The Apple Door is the only one, most of the other ones are like BYO's.
You know, I'm not sure of that, but guys, some of them do have Sunset Cruises, and I suspect the people may, people may bring their own.
I don't know if that's official or not, but this is the same as it's been for the Apple Door?
I believe so.
It does say the Class One includes vessels.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I don't, the question is what...
Lots of different, different venues have different types of licenses and different types of alcohol served.
Yeah, good question.
Do they do that just sitting in the, is it different if you're just like sitting in the harbor operating at a sub-bar?
I think any time it's...
Does that allow them to do that?
Anytime, well, they can do that, but any time a vessel is going to sell any sort of alcohol. It's on page nine of, of their license.
Is that only to passengers?
What's that?
Is that only to passengers, or is it like a...
You expect the crew to be drinking?
Oh, well, I guess, how would you say it, like, people that go out for a cruise?
Right.
BYO is different than, like, when you're actually selling.
I guess I was just thinking that the, it might be a nice business for somebody to just have the boat just there, and you could go on, and not everyone wants to go out, but I'm getting too much into it.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Five zero, thank you. On the consent agenda item for tonight, we have a couple of items. We have a request to approve the following of Vittler and Lodging License Renewals for Blaze, Camden, River House Hotel, Elms of Camden, Mariner's Restaurant, and the Jack. Is there any objection to the items on the consent agenda from the board? Not hearing any of those items are hereby adopted. To item five, which is two items we have tonight, one is the appointment of a second liaison to the EMS Services Performance Review Committee. This has brought to our attention that the actual documents for the formulation of that committee requires, Stephanie, correct me if I'm wrong, two members from each member town. Stephanie has currently been appointed as liaison from the Select Board. Now, I guess the question at hand is, is the second person, does it have to be a Select Board liaison or not?
The contract right now reads two Select Board members. There, I don't believe any other town at the moment fills both seats, as far as I know.
They have not filled both seats?
They've only filled one, each town. So the problem is a quorum.
Oh.
So to make sure that there isn't a problem with the quorum, each town should appoint two people.
Is the quorum defined as number of bodies, not the representation for the town?
I believe it is the number.
Complication. In the past, we have had two Select Board members, they were, I think, Mark and Taylor at one point, and et cetera, so, um, I, I just didn't know, because the drain, I'm trying to protect the drain on Select Board members for committees, that's all.
Right, like with microsolid waste, we can, we have two, but we, there's a, if only one is there, then the, the one, you know, one member can have the power of both votes. And then, you know, the main thing with microsolid waste is that we try to, like, if, if one town, we had it so that the quorum was if all four towns had to be represented, but that was causing us to have, like, you know, a lot of the time missed meetings, so then if one town said, okay, we're, we're okay with you going forward and meeting without us.
Right.
But maybe we should look at changing that for...
Yeah, I would think it would be smart, because it's, it's, if somebody wants to volunteer, I have no problem with that, but I, alternatively, appointing, the board can appoint Stephanie as being the complete representation from the town of Camden, representing two votes.
I would have no problem with that. I'd also, and I'm not sure when the right time to bring this up, but I would like to propose to the group that we amend the contract, however that may need to happen, to appoint one Select Board member and a qualified citizen that may be selected or that might come forward to ask.
So one Select Board and one at-large member from each town, correct?
Correct.
Different word.
Different word.
At-large, well, it means somebody from the community.
Yeah.
I, I would highly recommend that, gives us the flexibility to change the contract, but, but I think we shouldn't go ahead and do that, but, but in the immediate, my suggestion would be in, in, in the interim, while that change is being made, that we appoint you as, as having both hands and representing two, two votes for, for quorum purposes for EMS committee.
I mean, does anybody else want to do it?
If Allison wants to be, I, I, I'm just trying to, again, if somebody really wants to be on the EMS committee, that's fine, I have a problem, but I, I just think it's a little over, overloaded.
I, I think one representative from this board is enough.
I think, Tom, I agree with you, I, I think it is, so I think if we...
So I, I guess, you know, the EMS Performance Review Committee, they don't have, you know, it's not like with midco solid waste where there's like a head of power of an interlocal agreement that creates it, and bylaws, and, you know, that whole process of, you know, changing...
I see.
The interlocal agreement where all four towns have, it's much more flexible than that. So I think that, you know, just by agreement of the current board members at the EMS Performance Review Committee, they could change sort of how they, you know, they function, so that it's more efficient, and, you know, in instances where, you know, they, they only have one member each, they have that flexibility to, you know, not let that stop them from meeting if they can't get a certain number of bodies in the room.
Yeah, the problem with having two members from every town is, is a quorum issue. It's much simpler to me to have just one member from each community, period, that represents, and that you don't have a quorum if somebody doesn't show up from the town. But you could have an alternate, that if you shouldn't be able to make it, you could have an alternate, which could be a Select Board member or an at-large resident, that's what I would recommend. Any other comments, Allison?
And so with this committee, the, the idea is really that it's just about reviewing that, that northeast contract, right? So the scope is pretty, pretty small. Are we at some point going to have like a, a committee with a broader focus that would be discussing sort of all of the different EMS or tangentially related things, like, dare I say, like a public safety committee, or a, is there, is it, would it be like this committee would maybe evolve into that, and we would broaden the scope of this committee? committee would maybe evolve into that, and we would broaden the scope of this committee, or we would come up with something totally different, or like, where are we in that process of needing to discuss all of those things more?
I mean, I, I do think that we're sort of going to get to a point pretty soon when there's a proposal made by fire chiefs of, you know, from our town as well as other towns about sort of the future of, you know, EMS and fire services. And I think when that point comes, it would be wise to sort of look at getting a group together to sort of help work through that process.
Right, before it comes to us, and.
Yeah.
Um, I do think that the first place that they'll go with it are to all their elected, you know, officials, so, you know, whether it be city council or select boards, that will be, you know, the, kind of the first groups that they make that presentation to. And then I think based out of that, um, you know, it would be, it would be advantageous for us to think about, you know, how we, um, sort of support that effort and trying to flesh out how it moves forward. I think that given the focus of the Performance Review Committee and the communities involved, it might not align with, you know, what might be proposed in the future.
Right.
Sorry to be cagey about it, but.
No, I agree, I agree.
I think, I think we can, you know, I can be very clear that, you know, Hope and Lincolnville aren't as keen to look at some sort of, um, you know, municipally-owned, fire-based, you know, regional fire-based EMS system as other.
Right.
Other communities in the region. You know, Rockland being one of them. So the fact that, you, it, it just doesn't kind of align with that structure, so it would be a whole different group of people.
Right. So I think if it's about the EMS issue here, um, I think with this board, uh, needs to get, I don't know, give Stephanie is, is what we think is the best approach to take to the other towns. We have a couple of options. It's the two SBs as it is now, which is awkward. An SB and a member-at-large, if we required to have two. An SB and an alternate, which can be either a select board, a person, or, or a, um, or a member-at-large. In case, you know, you can't make it sometime, but which, which do you prefer? Give me an opinion.
I would prefer to have, um, another, what did you call it?
Alternate?
Person-at-large.
Yeah, okay, just, so we have one select board member and another person-at-large as, as the two representatives of Camden, because that would probably be pretty easy to fill. I know some people would wanna be on that.
Yeah.
Already, so, um, I, I think that would be the, I don't think we, um, that agreement, has that been, that committee, is that not been approved by the towns, has it, by the select board?
I mean, the select board has to appoint their representative, but other than that, there's a lot of flexibility on how they change.
Okay.
How they sort of govern themselves.
Well, I mean, I just didn't know if you wanted, um, we, we just wanted to send that message off to get agreement and come back and we can fill the, the at-large person.
My, um, kind of behind-the-scenes conversations, it doesn't feel like there's any pushback on that.
I wouldn't think so.
I think, um, the other towns are also very open to having that happen in theirs as well.
Okay.
But I wouldn't speak for them, but in just my feeling on the conversation.
Okay. So you wanna have one more conversation with them, and then just, then we can fill the at-large spot?
Yep.
That work?
Sounds good.
Sounds good to me, too. Secondly, on the action items, we have to reschedule our select board prior workshop, which was scheduled for yesterday. I would suggest that we look at, um, towards the end of the month, I mean, since we're already almost halfway through it, um, or very early September. Next select board is 23 August, so perhaps, um, we had had it on a Monday. Does anybody have any preferences, the week of the 29th of August, or the week of, well, the 5th of September is Labor Day, so we gotta be a little careful with that week. And I think we have a select board meeting on the, is that on the 13th in September, Audra? Let me double-check, but, uh, and Audra, what do you think about the end of August, early September? It was, you know, um, partially getting you back in the, in the, in the groove from your, uh, leave. Um, would that, is, is that too soon? You wanna do it a little bit later?
I mean, I think that the week, starting the 29th, if that works for all of you, that would be.
Right.
A good week.
All right. Uh, one second. Okay. How about we, we look at, and, and all of you, at the 29th, Monday, can that work? Time of day, we, last time we pegged was four o'clock. Does that work for everybody? Or earlier, later?
I'm available earlier, or?
Me, too.
That's the consensus.
Today, I am.
It's Mondays of August 29th, Allison.
I can try to be.
Sophie?
Yeah, anytime, works for me.
On the 29th.
Three o'clock?
Yep.
You hold a job, so, you know.
I don't know what it, three o'clock.
Does that work for everybody?
Yes.
Audra?
Yeah.
All right, so we'll peg, um, let me write it down before I forget. Um, August 29th. At three. Got it. Thank you very much.
How long are we planning on that? How long will that be?
An hour and a half.
Yeah. Yeah. I can make it as long as you want. But I, I think it counts, outside an hour and a half. Outside.
What did you say, outside?
Out, out, that's the outside limit.
Oh, I thought, I was like, that'd be nice, having outside.
Yeah, we can have outside, we can have my boat. No, so anyhow, that's established, so.
Do it on the Apple Door.
The sixth item on the agenda is an update on the Midcoast Internet Development Corporation. Let me give a little brief, to try to be brief. This, this entity has been around since the towns of Rockport, Camden, Rockland, and Thomaston approved, um, joining this entity. It's, it's basically a utility district entity. It's been incorporated initially, um, there, a lot of work was, uh, to formulate it was done by Deborah Hall and Matt Siegel. Did a lot, a lot of work on this and got it rolling, but as of December of, uh, over a year ago, Matt was too busy and I took over as representative, um, well, as a, a person on the board for Midco's Internet Development. Its initial thrust was to try to figure out ways, obviously, to, to affect fiber and broadband in our, in our towns. Some things changed along the way, and one of the biggest ones was Rockland, was, is being built out by Consolidated Communications for the entire town. Um, it's obviously an independent company, like Spectrum or anybody else, that's building the fiber there. And I mention that only because it kind of put Rockland, from my perspective, in a wait-and-see attitude. One of the thrusts we had talked about was getting the four towns to get all four towns' operations onto an independent fiber network. Rockport already has one, by the way, they're already ahead of most. Uh, Rockland has, for a number of years, has had approved chunk of money to do something, and, uh, but they have, they have put that on the shelves, so that whole initiative kind of stalled. The next step was a lot of discussion about raising money for internet fiber development. And there was a lot of effort, a phenomenal amount of effort. Uh, I know Audra was involved, Allison and I were at the time, too, and trying to get money from Knox County, uh, because of the opera money, the $7 million, I believe, they had been allocated. It, it fell on relatively deaf ears, and it died. In parallel with that, there are many entities in the state and feds that have provided millions of dollars for communities to improve their internet connectivity with, with fiber. However, what occurs is, and again, I'm trying to make this a long story behind all of this, but the, the state of Maine, for example, has the communities listed by the number of unserved, underserved, and served. In Camden, for example, I believe there's less than 100 unserved, it says, 700 underserved, and almost 2,000 served. Uh, you know, you, you question this data, it's just, but they're using that to determine where the money should be allocated, and then what they're using is the unserved numbers to prioritize the money. So for all intent and purpose, while there's still a lot of activity, especially, you know, Deborah and Denise Munger and, they've done a phenomenal amount of work, traveling all over the state, uh, to, to try to convince people to find funding, um, for the internet development. And FYI, there is, for, especially for Stephanie, and well, Sophie's too, and, and Tom, there is an Axiom report, which I'd be happy to get to, which really talks to the towns and what's needed to be done to bring those, Camden, Rockport, et cetera, to, uh, better connectivity. I believe the numbers they came up with in the Axiom report for Camden are around one and a quarter million dollars, something like that, it's a, it's a number around that order magnitude.
Is it on the website?
I think it is. I thought we put it on there. I, I don't remember, Allison, but I think it is, but if not.
It's in one of, it's in one of the board packets, actually, from last year.
It's in a packet, but I can get that to you, if you're interested. But, but, so there was a lot of activity, and it still continues to try to find funding, but it's, it's, it's two parallel tasks going on right now. One is to, you know, to try to, there is a mechanism in the state now that allows people who, myself at home, to link, to go to a link and report by upload and download speed, because honestly, if, if I reported my speed, it would be underserved.
Really?
Yeah. I know it would.
Who do you have?
Well, I only get 25 up and 15 down, something like that.
Probably the opposite.
Yeah, the other way around.
That's not.
But, but the devil is, the front of served is less than 50. And so it's, but, but the problem with that is we gotta get the participation of the electorate or residents to participate in that, and I know Thomaston is, is, uh, going to be doing that, because Thomaston has a very detailed database of emails for all the residents, and they're gonna use that to try to get people to click on and tell the people, the state, and hopefully get them in a category that might be considered for grant money.
Oh, I see, I see Lincolnville's been pushing it really hard for everybody to do that. I didn't, I wasn't even aware that we wanted Camden residents to.
Well, we haven't, we haven't, the data is just coming from Deborah, this probably next week or so, and I'll pass that on to Audra to see what we can do to do the same thing for Camden. But the intent is to get the underserved and unserved in a more, of a magnitude that's more realistic, and so that there could be the possibility, because without grant money, you're, you're slave to going out to have to, I don't know, a town could do a bond, the town could, you know, um, the town could, um, try to raise funding. There was a parallel initiative that started with Midco's Internet Development about eight months ago, to do exactly that, to go aside and try to get funding, so that this utility district could get funding to do fiber and manage it. That's what the intent of a utility district is. Today, like Rockland, they have Consolidated Communications, but it's like Spectrum or LCI. They can come in and say, Bob, okay, I'll, I'll hook you up, and it's gonna cost you $80 a month, and there, there's no, there's no competitiveness of using their fiber. So their fiber is, is here, this building is fed by LCI, correct? But we have to pay them their rates. So it, so it, what happened in parallel was GWI came in, which is a large internet provider, and they proposed to Midco's Internet Development Corp., and, you know, you can do what was done in Vermont, basically a bunch of towns came together, they all needed internet, they, they built a utility district, and it's functioning actually quite well. But what they did was, they, they, um, went out and got grant money, when the grant money helped build on the infrastructure, got people to, to take the service, in comes revenue, and with revenue, you get revenue bonds, and with revenue bonds, you can take that money and start building others out, like the more, the less underserved, less, uh, uh, unserved communities, like a Camden or Rockport. And that's kind of the tack that Midco's Internet has been on pretty consistently now for about six months, to the point where today, um, the towns that are joining in Midco's Internet Development, that towns like Cushing has joined, Starks is looking at joining, Morale, towns that, you know, they have almost complete unserved, according to state records. It's not, it's not really accurate, but the, so they get some grant money, and the grant money must be spent in those towns. The reason, so this brings the Midco's Internet Development Corporation to kind of a conundrum in my mind, because this was approved by Camden voters for Camden to be part of this, but in frank reality, the potential for Camden residents to see a benefit from this corporation in the near term is very limited. They would have to get to the grants for these smaller towns, produce revenue, get revenue bonds, and start using that to build out a Rockport or Camden or, uh, other communities that, that have bought into this. So that's, that's, and, and again, I want to underscore that the amount of work that Deborah Hall, Denise Munger, and others have done has just been phenomenal. They, they've been all over the state, they've put a phenomenal amount of effort into it. And I, I'm very impressed by it, but the facts of where we are is not their doing, it's the nature of the grant money, it's the nature of the industry right now, today. There's a possibility somebody may, some entity may come into Camden, do the same thing the Consolidated Communications is doing in Rockland. There are rumors about that out there.
There's the guy that's been walking around.
That's correct.
Measuring everything, and he told me, I'm forgetting the company now, but it was that, it was a Texas company.
Hotel Co?
It's Go Net First. It's Go Net Speed. It's a suburb of, a sub, a sub, I think it's suburb of Hotel Co. But there are entities, they are entities that are looking at Camden to do, to put in, uh, a private, uh, corporation like Spectrum, you know, people don't know that name best, fiber into the town of Camden. Where? We don't know. How extensive? We don't know, but it's also a, a, a corporate kind of a, um, of a, of a, of a supply, which Camden needs, there's no question about it.
Right, but what about the, are we ever gonna, didn't they find that in some cases the model is viable for the 1.343 million dollars, doesn't sound like, they found it was gonna be like 6 million in Lincolnville? And so, at that, at, what is the number that makes it so that the revenue from the system would, um, you know, for Camden, there's, the density is enough and the customer base is enough?
It comes down to what they call a take rate, how many people in the town would take that service and pay the rate for it. That's, that defines the income that would be generated by this, whatever the investment is, and the Axiom report suggests one, about one and a quarter million for Camden, to put the poles in, to put the fiber in, and that kind of thing. So the take rate, I don't, I'm not an expert, but I would have to believe it would have to be like, you know, a, a significant percentage of the town to take that service. It's kind of a catch 22. The real message here, I just wanted the board to understand, is that, from my perspective, the electorate here in Camden approved Midco's Internet Development Corporation. If I'm sitting there as a resident, I'm thinking, somebody's doing something about providing fiber to the town of Camden residents for better internet connectivity, you know, that's what the world is today. And honestly, I, from my perspective, and I don't pretend to be the expert as Deborah is, or even Denise, the time period for that to happen with this MIDC is years. So we're.
So what are you suggesting?
Yeah. Are you suggesting we pull out of?
Well, I don't, you know, first of all, there's nothing, there's nothing.
There's nothing to pull out.
Nothing you can, we signed an, an agreement with, but there's no, there's no financial implications to Camden, there's none of that. I, I'm the only member of the, currently of the board that is a select board member, currently, uh, but that's not important. Somebody else could represent us or represent our interests. I, I think, but it raises, is, is a priority to me, to the town, to look at what our options are regarding getting internet service, you know, in, while I'm still alive, you know, it, well, it, it's, it's, well, it, it, I can tell you, that ordering fiber today takes 11 months, 10 or 11 months. So you get, just starting, if you have the money, starting with the fiber, it's, it's a long-term commitment, but I, part of my message.
That's like to take it where you are? I think it's different depending on where you are.
I'm just talking about actually buying the wire. Buying the wire takes 11 months to get it delivered. So that's, that's just to give you an idea, lead time, and then you gotta install it.
Well, sometimes you call it LCI, and they're like, well, we can do it in three months if you pay us.
Right.
$1,500.
Well, I think, I, I think the town will have to discuss, I just, first and foremost, want the residents to understand that there's been a lot of activity in the background, but I, I also wanna be honest that what you voted for, if you expected to see, it's high-speed internet, and then next year, it ain't gonna happen. In two years, I don't see it happening either.[1764.26] So we, the town, I think we have to look at our, when we discuss priorities, for example, whether we want to look at other options, because there's two, there's two schools, there's one where you have your own utility district and you run it the way you want to run it and service it, versus having a Spectrum or LCI come in and build out your town. The problem with the private sector is, they're going to look at the most size of campuses is not worth it, because there's only two people on that road. That's, doesn't give you 100% coverage, in my mind, so these are some of the things we need to consider relatively urgently, because we are in a time period where everybody's relying, well, most people are, on, on high-speed internet to do jobs, to do work, and a lot of people have moved here, I know a bunch of them during this real estate expansion, who are going to do their legal profession, engineering, whatever, they're selling products from home, from here. So it's, it's, it's.
And school.
Yep, so that's really.
And school, school as well.
Or school also. So anyway, that's, try to be brief, that's, that's, that's the summary of it. But I just want people to understand that it's not going to be a quick term, a near-term solution, no matter almost which way we go.
Can, can we see how other local towns have done it? I, I know it's been installed.
Yep.
Various places locally.
Yep, yeah, typically it's with the private companies, LCI, GWI, Consolidated Communications.
Did those municipalities make an agreement with that private contractor to, you know, 100% coverage, was that a stipulation?
It has been done, especially in Vermont. I'm not sure about La Crosse Main, but you're talking about creating a utility district, which MIDC is. But given its thrust in trying to get grant money to fund, for example, exaggerating, if Camden decides to raise one and a half million dollars, or some number like that, we could create our own utility district, we could put our own fiber in, then you have to manage it.
Who maintains and manages?
We'd have to maintain it, we'd have to.
Well, there's the other, you can put that out to, you can contract with.
You can.
Companies that provide the service.
That's what.
We just own the infrastructure and then we contract with.
That's correct. In fact, that's what GWI would do, they're doing the effort, Midcoast Internet Development Corporation, they are going to contract, install the fiber, they're going to contract with labor to maintain it, and it's just a function, again, of the take rate, but they will ensure that they're building out the whole town. So that, so.
What about the model that is talked about so much where the municipality owns the, the hard infrastructure and then there's still a competitive market where you.
Yeah, that's, that's still what Midcoast Internet Development Corporation is proposing. So even though, you know, none of the municipalities would be managing the actual physical, you still need to have a company that's managing the physical infrastructure, but then you have an open network that you allow multiple, you know, ISPs to lease space on. So GWI is the most, the most eager to, you know, partner with that sort of system. You know, they have all kinds of networks, you know, infrastructure that they don't own, but they lease space on. Whereas LCI, they're very clear, our business model is to both own the infrastructure and be the ISP. So that's kind of, you know, one of the major philosophies of Midcoast Internet Development Corporation is an open network where the infrastructure is owned by the, the towns, but any ISP, even Spectrum, LCI, if they change their business models, which they never will, but, you know, if they chose to, they could lease space on that network and, and be the ISP that's providing the service.
The practice has shown, if we, Camden had its own utility district, this is an exaggeration here, and we would build out our own fiber, we would be open. So Spectrum or Solidated or LCI could provide service to my home competitively with our own service. So it, it's, versus LCI puts their own fiber in, they're not going to let anybody else go over that line, it's just LCI. So they have, in a sense, a monopoly of connection, that's the difference.
What does Islesboro do?
They're, they're a municipally-owned network where, you know, any ISP could come on and provide the service.
Right. So that, that's the, you know, the, the, if we, if this is, continues to be a priority with the town of Camden, and might be, and should be, then we have to look at some of these other options, and it's how to play it out. But it's, it's not easy, it's a lot of effort, but if we think that we're going to be so clever as to get grant money from somebody, I wouldn't hold my breath. I don't, I don't see it.
I completely agree.
And that's kind of as it should be, because there are a lot of places worse off than us.
Well, yeah, there's people, there are towns that have zero connectivity. I don't know, maybe using DSL, I don't know, but as far as unserved, it's like, unserved is like everybody.
We got, I mean, Trenton, Dallas, my mom's house, it's just like.
Well, what'll, what'll happen is little, little towns, these little towns with the grant money are going to have better connectivity than Camden is.
Yeah, and I guess our challenge is that, you know, the denser in-town areas, they're always going to be decently well-served, because it's financially viable to do so.
Right.
For us, it's, it's the rural parts of town that, you know, we have trouble with, like, we don't, we didn't even have fiber going out to the Snow Bowl, for example. You know, that whole sort of area, you know, Barnstown Road, you know, it's really poor options for them, and other parts of Camden where it's not dense enough for companies to come and provide that service. We're lucky that, you know, Spectrum does have infrastructure there at all, but it's a monopoly.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, you live there, you can speak to that.
We are lucky that we're not opportunists.
Yeah, that's true.
What do, what, what do we do for people who are outside of the downtown density and don't have access to internet and need it in the meantime, while we're still, you know, figuring out what to do between a municipal utility, between waiting for the state to install it? So how, how do we make sure that everybody who needs it, and it's, basically everybody has access to internet in the meantime?
Somebody has.
How do, how do we do this? How do we ensure?
Somebody has to build all fibers to those locations.
And I guess it's how, how aggressive and how involved do we want to be?
And how are we, yeah.
We, you know, we could take that on and build out, you know, dark fiber network and, you know, lease out space on it to any ISP who wants to. And, you know, fortunately, we have, you know, we have a TIF that could potentially pay for the debt service on it. So we do have options.
Because to me, it's really a matter of equal access, and we need people, you know, for jobs, for school, for, for, for just connectivity, just to be able to call, it's, it's capital now that people be, have access to the internet. So in the meantime, I think it would be worth our while to, to study how we make sure that everybody in Camden actually is connected.
Yes, well, that, that's the whole point. If Midcoast Internet Development Corporation, all the phenomenal amount of work they've done, it's probably not going to be the mechanism. We have to evaluate alternative mechanisms, in my opinion.
Okay. Maybe for us, it's, it is the focus on the rural areas of Camden, where it's not competitive for private sector companies to invest in building the infrastructure.
Right, because the, because the number in the Axiom Report, as I recall, is covering the whole town.
Right, right, and I guess, you know, some of the ways that that's done, and, and a way that we, and, you know, this is just brainstorming, this is nothing that I would say we jump on right away, but, you know, it's always sort of looking for an anchor facility, or an anchor business, or, you know, something that.
Right.
You know, is a reason to, to run the fiber out there, and for us, you know, we do have the Snow Bowl that's right out in.
Yep.
The most rural part of town, so.
The costs are way higher than.
Well, I definitely, I definitely want to have this conversation before our priorities workshop, because there's, there's an effort here that I think has to be done, and it doesn't get solved in one meeting for sure, but I think it's important. And, and again, I want to underscore again, you have no idea the phenomenal amount of work that some of the people on MIDC have done. I mentioned a couple of names already, Deborah and Denise and company, it's phenomenal.
And I mean, and even if, you know, they, I think Deborah and their advocacy work, it's going to benefit other communities across the state, even if it doesn't end up benefiting us directly, so.
Exactly, they could wind up with 10 or 12 small towns underneath the umbrella of Midcoast, Midcoast Internet Development, has no impact on Camden, no cost to Camden, even though our name is carried on the, on the, on the, on the board. But it's, 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 it's become, no longer Midcoast Internet Development, it's become Regional.
Regional.
Internet Development Corporation.
Right.
Thank you.
What about having this guy come, and I feel like.
You did, right?
Well, the, I'm forgetting where.
What, from Axiom?
Exactly.
You could.
I remember something about, maybe Matt Siegel before had wanted to wait, or there was something, but it feels like we got this report and we talked about it a little bit, but we never got to fully.
But I think that's.
I mean, the not, there's a lot of information that we already paid for that.
There's a lot of questions on the Axiom Report, frankly, they're never going to answer it. Sophie asked a bunch of them when we, when we did it. That's one of the activities that has to be done, but it has to be part of a program, a group that's looking at this as a function. We have to question Axiom Report, we have to talk with companies like GWI, what they can do, and what they may propose.
But could just some bait, like, just sort of the basic overview of how all this works, it, I feel it would be helpful to me to occasionally have a little bit more just basic information presentations, not that that will solve everything or give us the, we weren't going to be ready to vote to do something, but just when we pay for these reports, just even for the public benefit, for everybody just to have it say.
It's on the website? No.
Well, I don't know, Audrey just sent it, but it looks like there's a, a lot of these concepts of how all of this works, just.
I agree.
If we decided at the time, I remember Axiom and this Mark Quillette guy, it was like, they really know a lot, and so they could do this study and it's going to be worthwhile. It would be nice to have somebody present what was learned, and then of course to ask questions and say that we think this or that is inaccurate, but.
I, I think that's very, that can definitely happen, I have no question about, but again, the message, I just want the voters to understand that MIDC may not be what we perceived it to be initially, which would be the, the primary reasonably short-term, we're talking years, focus for the town of Camden at this point.
Bob, do you know how much of Camden is served by fiber already?
Well, if you look at the state data, it goes by accounts, it's probably, if you count underserved and served, it's probably 2,500.
I mean, I don't have fiber, but I have 200 down and 20 up, and that's just.
I'm not talking fiber, I'm talking about served, and or underserved, they could be served, like myself, I'm, I don't have fiber, I have connectivity through spectrum cable, but, internet service, but I couldn't tell you, other than the town, what fiber is out there, I, there were maps of that, but I, I think there are people still in this town doing DSL.
Really? How many DSL, how many places in Camden is DSL really the only option?
I don't know. Unserved.
It's really difficult, because a lot of the companies won't publish their maps of where they have their infrastructure.
Yeah.
But I mean, I can say that, you know, we're served by LCI at this building, there's fiber here, and all of the other municipal buildings apart from the Snow Bowl have fiber that run to them.
Right.
And they'll serve, you know, any business or residence that they pass. So it's, I think that's more than we're aware of, and, you know.
Public Works too?
What's that?
Public Works has fiber?
Yeah, there's fiber out to that facility at John Street, and, you know, the Three-Ring Binder runs through here, and that's owned by First Light now, and they serve some, even though they're, you know, that's like a middle mile provider, they still will serve certain businesses that are big enough capacity, like I think Lyman Morse has fiber at their facility, so.
They do.
Yeah, it's really, it's, you know, it's hard to say exactly where it goes, but I think it's a lot more than what we're aware of.
Can you tell by looking? Can you, when you look at the wires, can you, do you know?
I could learn it, but I don't know as of now.
No, I don't, again, I don't know the statistics, I think it's skewed, as I said earlier, to the state, who they think is underserved, the number is wrong.
And another problem with it is, just because it passes your house doesn't mean it's affordable for you to access it.
Right.
That's probably the biggest.
And the, and the affordability rate for the state, I thought was really high, like $120 a month, which I think is, phew.
Right.
It's steep.
For just internet?
Phenomenally high.
For just internet. Is it affordable?
Yes, remember, that's what, we had this discussion when we first looked at the Axiom Report, I was like, I was shocked.
Well, no, that MIDC is, what they've been looking at is numbers like 70, $75 for, for service, but again, this, I want to solve, we're not going to solve the problem here. I think it's huge, we do need more input and more data, but we also discuss what we want to do going forward as a municipality versus private industry, and we do have sources we can get that information from. Sorry, it was a long one. So anyway, onward to, and there'll be more to follow, of course, onto our, I excited which is reports, I guess, Audrey, do you want to start?
Sure. I do have a little bit. All right, so a bit of an update on the parking kiosks at the public landing. So, you know, after, they've, they've been installed for about a week now. So they've, they have been effective at facilitating turnover and generally discourage people from parking there on a long-term basis, so, you know, that being one of the goals of, you know, this test project, it has been effective in doing that. We're averaging about 600 a day in revenue, so, you know, if we have them active for three months, and we, you know, three months total, you know, we're looking at about $54,000 in revenue, but that number could certainly drop as, you know, usage of the landing does decline in September and October. We're receiving questions around allowing people to pay to extend their time, so, you know, the ordinance and the way that it's currently written is that you're, you're there for three hours, that's it, then you're supposed to move your car somewhere else. So I think that, you know, if the group that sort of oversaw this project gets back together and they want to look at some sort of policy tweaks, it might be looking at, do we allow, you know, people to stay past the three hours, and, you know, what do, what do we do about pricing if, if that's going to be encouraged? Because in a lot, I think the move in a lot of places is that they allow people to stay there as long as they want, but the pricing keeps escalating the longer that they're there.
Correct.
Because the idea is still that it's not long-term parking, it's something that turns over, you know.
Correct.
On a, on a more consistent basis.
Or what about, is it a different category? What I'm hearing from people is that they might be there in the morning for a couple, for, and they hit that three-hour max, but then they want to come back in the afternoon. I think the system is actually allowing them.
Yes.
To do that, and we're not ticketing people at this point for that, which I think is good, unless, unless the lot is like jam-packed, I don't.
The only, the only ticketing them where there's somebody parking there without paying.
Right.
And that, that has occurred, of course.
Right.
I think the system is built so that they can come in the morning and come back in the afternoon, but I can double-check that, because we had this discussion about the.
I don't know what you mean by that. I mean, I know the words, but what?
So what I mean is, we, we didn't want people to go over their three hours, get in their car, drive around the block, and come back. Right, so that's not, that's not the purpose. What we do want is, if they come in the morning between like 8:00 and 10:00, and leave and come back between 2:00 and 4:00, that this, it's not consecutive. So they can't, they're allowed to do this. We're not allowing them to leave, drive around, and come back.
But now we're thinking that maybe we will. I mean, some, I've talked to a couple of really upset people convinced that they weren't going to be allowed to, it wasn't even just like staying, they wanted to stay for five hours at a time, they were like, wanted to park there for three hours and then come back for dinner.
Right.
And I was like, oh, that's allowed, but I, but the way that it's.
But it's being interpreted by the.
To come back and park down there? I guess not, that was what, there was, there's some confusion.
Right.
I, I think that the bottom line here is, this is a pilot program, that they try certain things, not the least of which, most importantly, there's probably a list of them, not the least of which is, right now, you can, if you park more than three hours, the rate is constant, and every place I've lived in, on the planet, says after three hours, you start paying a little bit more per hour, kind of thing. So that those things would, they have to be tweaked as we're learning more about, and then we have to address this thing about, yeah, if they're driving around for an hour and come back and park.
Yeah, you should, you should be able to, I mean, that's.
We just got to be careful, we don't get too many rules and regulations, trying to solve something you can't solve.
But I think, but I think we talked about it, and we're allowing, I'll, I'll double-check. I saw Scott, our parking officer, and I asked him how it was going, he said, it's great, and people are actually thanking him, because they say that it's easier to find a parking spot now on the public landing.
Yes, yeah, and I.
Like all those people.
His, his role down there has really changed from sort of, it's, it's not as much enforcement, it's sort of more like a.
Information and education about, yeah. And we need, we need to do a bit more, I need to, and it's, I haven't been able to do that, but on communication and making sure that we, we inform the public of, you know, the rules and how to do it. But mostly, I've, I've had really positive feedback, so.
The Knox Mill parking lot, I'm noticing, is filling up more, which is great, that's the idea, but is there any way that we could get, this, the abuse by campers is like.
I know, I just noticed this issue yesterday, parking, you know, parking across five spots, so.
Creative parking.
Why aren't they, why are they, it feels like they wait all the time for somebody to call and complain about it, and the same thing goes with sidewalk parking, but could But could they just regularly check that? Like I saw a camper there today for a really long time. It didn't have a ticket on it or anything. Or it seems like with all the people we have driving around that work for the town, somebody, you know.
Where can campers park?
That's the thing. We haven't really.
Over.
Yeah. I guess it depends on where you'd like to send them. But I do think that that's another thing that that group should.
And we're not going to solve those here.
Policy recommendation on.
Audra, what else?
So moving on, the next thing, Ransom Environmental received a bid for cleaning up the tannery. The total cost was $124,485, which is a fantastic price. It's basically doing everything that was discussed in the workshop. And that's going to necessitate about $18,000 of matching funds expenditure to cover the entire cost, which that's, it's doable, given some of the carryforwards.
That's over and above the grant money that we were receiving.
Yes.
So, so actually, in the workshop, it wasn't extra clearly defined exactly what they were going to do. It was like we were going to have options. And it was going to be separated out so that they could decide.
Tell working to be options, she's right.
Yes, so this is, I'll tell you what the scope of this is.
Add-on packages and the riverbanker, not the riverbanker, the riverwalker, not the riverwalker.
The riverwalker is part of it for sure. That has to be those.
Two sections, two portions of the riverwalker.
So this is, this is for the soil removal. The landscape cover system and the path cover system.
Right. So it's basically, Allison, the money she's talking about is for the, we can remember the diagram. There were two areas by the Riverwalk.
Yeah, but we had a significant.
And the triangle. That's it.
So the, so the triangle is going to get covered? And then the two portions of the Riverwalk are going to have soil removal? And then some type of replacement?
Actually, it's a very limited soil removal there.
It's pretty, yeah.
It's very limited. It's mostly.
So, but it hasn't covered some of the other things that Allison was concerned about, which is some of the debris on the riverbank. Okay.
So how are they gonna, is this all like documented out somewhere that what they're going to do? Like, are they gonna, is that, how are they going to remove soil but leave that big massive tank that's like about to fall into the river or the?
Again, again, the scope of work, I don't believe, and I don't, I haven't seen the documents either, but I believe it only covers the three areas I mentioned.
Right, yeah, just the path, not the actual bank.
Correct. So that's what the number she's talking about. 124 plus rams, ransoms cost to manage, plus the recent money we spent for the borings. And that leaves us with about a less than $20,000 makeup we have to have above the grant monies we have available. And the work will be done by?
So, yep, so they're gonna, I think, third, third or fourth week of August? And then it'll take them about three weeks.
So, so, EFI?
EPI?
Yeah, that's a.
EFI.
I think it's EPI, yeah.
Is it EPI?
Just ask them about removing that tank or like a few things. I mean, anyway, I just, it just seems crazy when you, someday we should all just walk down there and be looking at the same thing together and, because removing soil around that without it impacting, I mean, there are trees and there, it's just hard to imagine how you would not just take out some of that debris at the same time.
If we do ask them for an ad change to remove some of the stuff Allison is talking about, does the DEP involve them? We're awfully close to the river there.
Anything we do out there has to be DEP. It has to be, has to be involvement because you're removing stuff that we don't know what's wrapped around it inside that crumbling tank and that kind of thing. Again, the scope of work includes what was shown in the drawing and that is it. Any other work is not in the scope.
Sure, but what would we have to do to?
You'd have to go and do a design and quantify it and send out a bid for that package.
I'll just ask them what they're planning on doing. I mean, it's just, I mean, it's just, it's just the Riverwalk.
I mean, I think there would be, you know, NERPA permitting and all that.
The what?
NERPA permitting, you know.
Oh, there's no question.
Natural Resources Protection Act.
No question, but anyhow, that's good news.
Yeah, I've seen it.
Yeah, and I believe that was pretty much it for updates that I had.
Well, that's good news. Thank you.
Oh, I do have one other, so I'm, I'm going to be, Dave St. Laurent and I have a meeting with MDOT to talk about the Matthew John de Shertail sidewalk. So there's some engineering issues that need to be resolved. There's a conflict in the design between the location, the location of the catch basins and the water main. So we need to kind of figure that out before construction can begin on that. So it might delay that slightly.
Okay. Thank you.
What is the timeline for that project presently?
So it's supposed to be started this year. And I think they're actually hoping that they can get almost everything done except for the.
They were marking it last week.
Yeah.
They've started a little, they did a little.
They were marking it last week.
Okay, so they're hoping to do it 2022?
Yes, yep. And they might need to finish in 2023, like come back in the spring.
For the weather situation, yeah. Good, thank you, Audra. Select Board, Stephanie.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Ms. Sophie.
So I'm gonna make Ray Anderson happy. First of all, I have to tell you, I'm super excited that people are excited about the advisory committee and participating and wanting to be part of it. And we've been working, I have been working with the consultants to set up the work appropriately. And the reason why you haven't heard anything since the last board meeting where we, I reported that we had a kickoff call, is that because we've been working with the consultant to set up a little bit of bylaws, to give them names of people that they should talk to. And I believe you were one of the person we recommended they speak with. So they're still doing groundwork to design the bylaws and select the people who will be on the, on the board, on this advisory committee, which name, by the way, is not set either. So I'm just mentioning the advisory committee as a, you know, placeholder. Don't, don't take this word for, you know, it's not set in stone. So we're moving along. They've asked a lot of questions. We've given them a lot of documentation, a lot of background, a lot of history. They are doing their background work as well, you know, contacting other organizations, other stakeholders. And I'm hoping that by the next board meeting, we'll have more of an update. But I know it's a, it's a difficult situation because we only see each other every two weeks. And I can only give you substantive updates because if nothing really happens, there's nothing to report on. And if it's a message I can ask you to carry around to people with who you talk about is we're working on this, we'll communicate when we have substantive information to share. And that whatever happens behind the scene is prep work and is their work. There's no conspiracy. And I know, I know I can count on you to carry the message. So bear with us. And if you have any doubts, if you have any questions, call Forest or call me. But, but it's, it's, it's in the works.
I don't mind getting into going back and forth here, Ray. I think we're, we definitely want to do an agenda item on this. And it'll probably, I'm hoping, the 23rd.
Yep.
So we can, but in the meantime, if there are any questions, any of those things, great things you brought up.
Call me. And so one of the things also, Ray, I want, I want you and everybody who listens to understand. We have a contract with this group, with Forest Bell Consulting and with Biohabitats for a very small piece of work. The main piece of work they're doing is setting up this committee and the bylaws and how it's going to be relating to the town, to the select board, to the townspeople. And what definitely, we know that the river project is a multi-year project. So what we're also thinking is how can we make this group sustainable and carry on through the project? And you have to agree with me that it is not something we can set up in just two weeks. It, so we're really carefully thinking about the bylaws, the staffing of that group, the relationship with the town, you know, how, with, with the town as the operating and managing part of the puzzle with Audra and Dave Sanron and all those services, with the select board as well. So there's a lot of different articulation and relationships we need to build. And we're building them for a long span of time. And that takes time because we want to make it right. So again, if you have questions, call me, really. Because I'm, I'm super happy to see this level of engagement from all different stakeholders in the town. But I ask everybody a little bit of patience because we literally just started the project. And I will keep you updated when we have substantive updates to give.
Yeah. Go ahead. Yeah, like, nobody else can hear you if you don't. Are you actively looking for more resumes or information from people? And should just send it to you directly?
Or to Forest Bell directly, whichever way you feel more comfortable with. But I am at your service.
Okay.
So I am, I'm serving. I'm a select board member. So if you need, if you have questions, dap, whatever, call me.
Okay.
Okay?
Ray, thank you. Onto Tom.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
How many people so far do you know of have emailed and asked to be on?
So I know of a few people who have emailed me, I think four or five. I know some, I know some people have contacted Forest directly. I don't have a full number of the people. It's one of the things we're going to go through with the consultants. But I see a lot of interest.
Oh, yeah.
People have either nominated themselves or nominated somebody they know who has skills that would be valuable to the, to the committee, you know. So there's a lot of interest and I'm, I'm super happy that so many people want to serve. Because we know we have hard times finding people to serve on committees and commissions. So this one seems to draw a lot of attention and I'm really delighted about it.
It's a good thing.
Yeah, it's not surprising at all.
Right, no.
When, when do you think, so when we were first talking about this, we were discussing that there would be kind of like criteria of who would be on there. Do you have any idea when that will be?
You know, I guess, one of the reasons why we discussed putting this on the agenda tonight, we're not ready to answer those questions yet. And by the way, it's frustrating all of us. We wanted to have them by now. But I think those, all those questions will be substantively addressed probably in the 23rd.
So I, and I can, I can say, we're working with the consultants to adjust the timeline because, you know, we've had a couple of false starts, basically. So we're looking at the timeline and at milestones. And they've already have done some ground, background work. They've already looked at other similar committees in other towns. So there's a lot of ideas they have that they have to also sit down and just kind of say, these are the options. But there will be criteria because we need to have rationals for every decision we make. It cannot be any, anything else than bylaws with rationals, with, you know, making sure that we nominate people that can work for a couple of years or three years, that, that we don't favor any stakeholder in particular or disfavor a stakeholder. So it's, it's, it's a, it's a chemistry project, basically.
Yeah, and it's been a process.
I'm only asking here this because I tried to ask twice and then I was told that she would answer my questions here. So that's why.
I understand, Stephanie. Believe me, I gotta tell you, the bottom line is we're all anxious to get some of Ray's questions answered, myself included, Ray, because I'm, I'm going to state it a thousand times, we've been talking about this since November, you know. And, and we believe strongly this has to be done to, many of the things that Ray mentioned are extremely important. I just, I'm very cautious with bringing up, if we can't answer a question, it looks like we're not doing this thing. So there's this premature discussion of stuff that's in the process. I prefer to bring it to a substantive discussion so we can answer, answer all the questions. And we just, it's been too slow.
Well, you know, the thing is, though, with, I mean, my hope is that it will come eventually to having them come and say, you know, we've done some, we've looked into, you know, the basics about Camden and the watershed and based on our work that we've done and here and here and here, we recommend that, you know, you form a, that, you know, we form a committee that is made up of, you know, these people and this is why. Not, one of the things with this project is it's, there's so many, and with Camden, there are just so many different, like, interested groups that I think it's gonna take them a little while to understand, like, oh, shoot, there's a whole different entity over there, the library, that controls everything here. So I want them to know a little bit about it so that they can make meaningful recommendations about how it is going to work. But then, just real quick, the other thing is that if they, when you communicate with them, maybe we have like the, you know, the former dam committee that serves like a small role. But, and we've had like, you know, Lincolnville has its lakes and ponds committee. And, but when we, whenever we talk about the lake, whether it be moorings or, you know, anything to do with the river, the lakes, there's so much interest in so many aspects of it, like wanting to know about the water quality issues, the water issues at Shertail can, I know that FB has done a lot of that kind of stuff. Like if they, I mean, if it works out with them, it would be good if we could incorporate the committee into being able to look over all of that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I think we have to be, I think we have to be, we have to be cautious and mindful that we have a scope of work for them for this initial piece of work. And not overload them with, this is a complex project.
Yeah.
And, and it's going to take phases. So I'm more inclined to go slowly and set it up properly so we can have a strong basis to continue working. And there's, there's a lot of documents and past history on different committees, as you said, that different, they have to be aware.
Do a little thing and then start over and.
We have to trust that we're going to bring the right party to the table at the right time, including Forest and Company. We'll do that. We're just not ready yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like, it should be them mostly, not have, not Sophie.
No.
Like having to say, this is what we're doing, this is why. Like, she's like the liaison for information, but it should be ultimately the recommendation about how it goes forward should come from them.
We're trying to extract the select board from the perception that it's in control of anything. And it's probably darn anyway, by the way. But, but we have a liaison for communication and information flow and that is it. We have a consultant that will be giving us recommendations on how to proceed and with whom. So with that, I want to skip over to Mr. Hedstrom, please.
Thank you. On Saturday, September 3rd, at Barrett's Cove, we have the 42nd Annual McGunta Cook Tin Man Triathlon. I'm telling you all of this now, yes, it is 42nd. That's one of the longest-running triathlons in the country. I think there's only one or two, including the Hawaii Ironman, that are a little longer, but not much. And I'm telling you this now, this gives you three and a half weeks.
Let me put it this way, I'll be happy to film it for you.
They are also looking for volunteers, Bob. And it's being run this year by One Community, Many Voices, which serves a number of great causes in this area. They have a bunch of distances, various distances, Olympic distance, sprint distance, a 5K run and some kids' distances as well. Right down to, you know, any kid that can swim a very short distance, 75 meters. So something to consider. It should be a great event. I'm involved, obviously, and I'd love to see you all there and anybody that can make it.
Thank you, Tom.
Just tell me it's not one of those things that the select board has to do.
Yeah. Mandatory fun, yes.
I'll do the 5K. I'll do the 5K.
Allison, that's true.
Like I said, volunteers would be very welcome as well.
Will do.
Thank you.
Allison.
Yeah, I attended a couple of meetings put on by the county for the beginning of the revision process for the Knox County Hazard Mitigation Plan. And so they had an event at the Watershed School, which was mostly county employees and like a couple other people. But it's only the very beginning. But it's, the Hazard Mitigation Plan is, it's like one of those documents that gets kind of ignored until it, you know, matters. But when you have different, like, issues or projects identified within the Hazard Mitigation Plan, it makes those things eligible for grant funding later on. It's also just a useful exercise trying to figure out, okay, if these types of disasters happened, what could we expect? So it was kind of interesting, like, the things that different people came up with. Some of it was related to climate change, some of it wasn't. Everything from falling rocks off of McGunta Cook Mountain onto Route 52, which is a more prevalent problem than we sometimes realize, to, you know, just like water quality issues and ticks and all this kind of stuff. So, and then the other one was about, it was the Maine Historic Preservation Commission, with the hazard mitigation people from the county. And that was just for municipal officials. But it was basically like, how can we protect historic properties or historic parts of our town while adapting to climate change? So it was interesting, some of the things that people were bringing up. There's a woman from Thomaston that was really focused on all the archaeological elements. And every time we do projects, you know, going, like, identifying where, you know, we should be careful digging and where there could potentially be, you know, archaeological resources. That's one of the things that's identified in our comprehensive plan as a shortcoming that we don't have a full inventory of potentially historic archaeological sites. So that was interesting. There's going to be a lot more to come. And the other thing, there, we had a.
And the other thing, we had a pathways committee meeting. They are doing a system where there's like going to be, the person who was chair is not available for a little bit. So Linda Clancy and Margot Murphy are going to be co-chairs and they are kind of working through that. We talked about bike racks, a lot, lot of energy about bike racks and opinions. But the town, it looks like, they, they have a few. They're going to be moving them around to see where they're more useful. This one doesn't appear to be.
No.
No, and I put a bike in there and it got stolen, which doesn't, it's never happened to me. Which, it was just a donation bike that wasn't of great quality and it didn't really fit me.
That's not the point.
No, but I meant to report it. But it was, like, that's the only bike that's been in that rack and it got stolen.
It wasn't that rack, yeah, okay.
I did leave it there for two days. But anyway, that's just clearly not a good spot, whereas there are other places where.
I think location-wise, it's not.
It's going to be a work in progress, but so that is that.
Thank you, Allison. I don't have anything. So with that, I'd like to have a motion to leave the select board, the select board meeting and convene an executive session under MRS 405/6/ E, Legal Rights and Duties.
So moved.
Second. Motion made in the second. We will, please, oh, yeah, I don't want to vote. All those in favor? Tom, thank you, I'm glad we have you here. Thank you, Ray, thank you all. We can terminate.